Flowway.
I'm trying to get my seat.
So their flowways are just.
No, no, I'll build it up.
We've got a couple of good options there.
It's now three o'clock, so I'm gonna go ahead and call meeting order. If you have one of these devices with you, please turn it to silent so we don't have phones ringing. And if you please join us for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a forum. With us today is our district attorney, Tommy Pierce, supervisor Tinkles, supervisor Banks, supervisor Fivert, supervisor Guy, supervisor Blair, and our district manager, Chris. And if anybody wants to speak or address the board, please fill out one of those forms in the back and hand it to this gentleman here. I give the paperwork there. So I'll start with that. People addressing agenda items.
We have two people on the list today. First up, Jim Shea, Carina Circle, flowway.
Come up here.
Sure, right up here, just your name.
Jim Shea. And I wanted to find out a little more about the flowway and what the options were going to be for that flowway and have the board looked at the other side of the flowway because if there's issues with one side, there's probably going to be issues with the other side also. And what was going to be done with that, with all the options I've been.
Flowway, just briefly, what we're gonna be talking about today is an easement on the flowway that was granted because there wasn't a complete 20 feet because the way the flowway was constructed. So they looked at reconstructing the flowway and maybe Mr. Geppert could address this question a little more completely since he's been living it for the last two years.
Yeah, Bob Geppert, public in reserve. Quite simply, the flowway on the resident's side that affected, I think, forty-some homes. Was it?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, twenty-four, twenty. There's a number of homes. And the flowway was not constructed wide enough behind those homes, or wider than it should have been behind those homes. In other words, if you went to home owner, if you looked out on your grass, you see water five feet into the flowway where there should have been grass. Okay, we discovered this at the time where we were doing our due diligence to convey over Carina. So a meeting was held in January of seventeen, in which all of the home, seventeen or eighteen, in January, seventeen, and we had Tetra Tech and the district manager, myself, and a couple of people. It was open to the Carina homeowners that were impacted to be aware of the situation. The interest that P-PAC had was, it's not built correctly, do you homeowners want it built correctly? And what that would involve is tearing up the lawn possibly and putting in the new bank. Anyway, to make a long story short, from then until now, the feedback that we all got was that, no, the homeowners did not want to do that. They wanted it to leave what's, you know, like it is. And then that resulted in other decisions that are now district councils working on where easements had to be granted. So that's fundamentally issued. We had a choice of make Lenar fix it, and they agreed to fix it, or leave it like it is. The direction that P-PAC received from the HOA was leave it like it is. And that's where we are.
About twenty feet was reduced to what?
Well, it's like they'd had to add five feet all the way down the flowway. It was in a pie shape.
I mean, in actuality, well, we're gonna get into this after.
Yeah, I think my understanding is, and Danny can probably better address it, it's very, the late maintenance, it's the LME, the late maintenance season proportion, that is not the full 20 feet and it's variable all along the back.
But they're the cascading results of the decision that the HOA made.
Yes.
To not, you know, if we'd have done nothing but told Lenar to fix it, no issue, no found, no harm, nobody would have just done it. But because we chose not to, that created other issues to get easements, which is what the board is now doing. And, you know, we, P-PAC support what the homeowners wanted. So I don't know if that answered your question or not. That's pretty much how it happened.
No, we have one more, Joe Schofield.
Joe Schofield, representing Carina, and I'm talking about the flowway. And my concern is that the easement is not wide enough. There's been a lot of work going on over the last number of years, but there's also a stormwater pipe system in that easement that handles the water draining off of the roofs of these houses in stormwater to prevent it from going into the flowway. And that pipe, apparently from what I've heard, is not, is less than fifteen feet in diameter, which means it's not considered the responsibility of the GSCDD.
Inches.
And is that correct?
Inches in diameter.
Fifteen, what I said.
Feet.
Feet, ow.
That's a big difference.
I'm gonna walk through it. Anyhow, it's less than fifteen inches. And what I would like for you folks to consider is, since this is a part of the bigger stormwater system, and the residents had nothing to do with how that was constructed, and Lenar seemed to, or WCI seemed to put a smaller pipe in there, which is going to force the Carina residents to be responsible for the maintenance of that piping system, which then flows into a bigger pipe that flows into the ponds, which then flow back into the flowway. I'd ask that you would consider, rather than the hundred and ninety-three or seven houses in Carina being financially responsible for the maintenance and upkeep of that smaller pipe, if that would be considered part of the stormwater system and part of the responsibility for the GSCDD rather than the homeowners there. Because Carina, as I would imagine, is paying to cut all the grass in that area, maintain the property there. The grass clippings will certainly mitigate into the drains that go into that pipe, and the cost to maintain and keep that clean could become very substantial for a few homeowners. And since it is, as I said, part of the bigger picture in the stormwater, I would request that you consider assuming the responsibility to keep that pipe clean and do whatever maintenance might be necessary for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
No, that's all we have.
All right. And that brings us to Mr. Surbo.
Good afternoon. Before I talk about the compensation, earlier today, we had the fourth session of the Certified District Workers Program for seven of your line staff folks. If you remember the board advance, I talked to you about the creation of a training program for line staff because they don't have the opportunity to go to the association, the special district management programs. So we've done that. It was designed and first tested in my district, then we did it at Sunland Lake Improvement District, and this is the third district that's been done. And at the June conference, the association is going to make this available to all the districts in the state. So you're basically the third one who did it. As of today, after today's session, you now have four employees who have completed the training, who have the other requirements necessary to receive their certificate. They've had two years' experience, they have other licenses and certifications, and they've participated in service training. And so I'd suggest that you work and figure out a way of having some opportunity for these people to be recognized. In our district, we do it, we give them a holiday gathering with board and staff and spouses and really make a big thing out of them receiving their certificates. It's important to them, they're very participatory, they really enjoyed it, and it's something that will continue. At the end of the session, we had a, we also looked at future training needs that they would like to have, and there's about three topic areas that we can do as a group, and then others that will be handled by in-service training here with Chris. But I want you to know that was completed and it was very, very successful, very successful. Regarding the district manager compensation briefing, when I first became involved with Gateway back in 2015 during the OD study, at that time, you had a management company, and the management, onsite management for Gateway at that time was in excess of $225,000 a year with several contracted items that really weren't properly addressed. In September of fourteen, prior to the study, is when the last set of job descriptions had been revised by the management company. In early 2015, they established eight pay grades, and as far back as 2012 was the last time they had revised the human resource manual and policies. When the study was completed, it pointed out a number of personnel issues that needed to be addressed, and one of which was for the board to hire its own district manager that was accountable solely to them. This was finally accomplished in February of 2017, when you hired Chris Schumaker as Gateway's district manager. Prior to the start of this position, the board approved a revised job description, an organizational chart, staff development plans, and revised salary ranges. It was agreed that a series of board advances would be conducted to ensure continuity for personnel and for organizational planning. And you did that with three board advances over the last couple of years. With the, while the initial salary range for the manager at that time was considered lower than the norm, until job functions were established and Chris became familiar with his role, all parties were satisfied. A nine-month job function process was put into place for Chris, and his job description was fine-tuned to meet the organizational needs. The second page of the briefing shows the areas of job functions that we tracked for nine months to ensure that they were indeed accurate and that the job description was also accurate. They recently completed evaluation of the manager and clearly pointed out the success that he's had, the value to the district, and the hard regard that you have on board members, staff, and community. We reviewed all of the job function data that we've had from the past, worked with Chris on a myriad of projects and activities, we read all the board's evaluation of the manager and discussed it at the last board advance, and seeing the improved management of the district as a whole, in my judgment, it's time to once again revise the compensation range for your manager. The salary established in 2017 was eighty to ninety-seven. At that particular point, Chris received $85,000. After checking several sources, including FASD's salary data, I'm now recommending that the board approve a salary range of ninety-five to 115, with Chris receiving a salary of 97,000. Given the cost to oversee this district prior to him assuming his responsibilities, this recommendation is more than justified and is commensurate with his job functions. Let me add just a couple things. Since my district is so similar to yours, especially with the number of people, the one thing that you have to understand is that you can't compare our jobs to city officials, county officials, or other special districts. We all are unique in the job functions that we perform. When you don't have buttons to push on a phone to bring other staff members in when there's a problem, you have to do it yourself. When you don't have a private secretary, when you don't have somebody writing grants, it all falls on you. So when you look at a position like that, which is what he's doing, and me and others, it's a lot different than when you have a huge support staff. That's the biggest difference when you're looking at job functions and trying to establish ranges. So I want you to make sure you understand that a lot of this, all of this, is based on the job functions that he performs to do this job.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Joe, could you review for the board and the public the ratings that the board gave to Chris a few weeks ago?
I do not have them, but I remember them, and they, all of them averaged out into the eighties, which was considered very good. The next range above that was exceptional. I turned those all in after the board advance, but no one, no one had anything less than very good. I'm sorry, I didn't, I guess I should have brought that somewhere.
And I'll just add, because I work with Joe on this, and I'm in agreement with the, with his recommendation. I'd also like to call out that I think per FASD, the latest salary assessment, I think the average range is 95 to 129K, the range from FASD. And the average salary for a DM per FASD is around, I think, 106.
116, 117.
Yeah, it was, well, the 95 to 129, I think, was the range, and the average person in a district manager role was making around 106.
Yes.
So even if we do an increase, which is like where Chris is to where he is now to where we recommend, he's still gonna be 10% under the average based on FASD. So I think we're making the right decision.
And it hasn't been adjusted since he took over, and the other.
Which is two years.
Yeah, two years. And the other hat that I want to put on is when I worked with districts, and no disrespect to Chris, but you want to make sure that you have a salary, that if you're not comfortable with him, he's not doing the job, or he wants to leave, you have a range that's gonna attract quality. And the range that you previously had is not gonna attract the kind of quality that you want to perform these job functions. And now I think that you're, you're right there, that if you had to secure another district manager, that you'll have that appropriate range.
Mrs. Carr, yes. This suggestion is for our new budget?
For whenever you want.
Okay, 'cause I, it's not, and it's not in our budget now, and I would consider that it would have to wait to put it into our budget.
The only thing I would caution is that, you know, you have a job description for your district manager, you started him at a certain salary, and it's been two years without any kind of an increase, so you might want to rethink your reserves and what you have and make some adjustments now, because it's been two years that the board should have done an evaluation and should have given an increase.
Okay, but there are many times that many people who are working don't get a raise until it's been, since it's not in our budget, I just believe that it shouldn't be now, it should be waiting until our budget, because that's the proper time, because that's what we just.
That's certainly your board's decision.
I'd just like to point out that we do have a vacancy, so it's not like this money wouldn't be in the budget. For salaries, it's in the budget. We have money there because we have, I think, even more than one position that is open that we haven't filled yet, so we wouldn't have to go into reserves to do this raise. But I still don't think it's in the budget, and I, you know, the budget was put out publicly, and I think that's, I understand.
I will say, I did not, I did not go to the budget, I mean, every year's budget certainly has monies for salary adjustments. I did not go into your budget to see what the balance was for increase. If you had put a couple percent in there overall for, for salary adjustments, I did not look to see if you had a balance.
And, go ahead.
I didn't have, I didn't see it.
But the budget, when it is, is given with an increase in the salaries for people. So that's where I feel that.
But this wasn't.
Well, that's.
Shame on board.
That's the way.
Shame on board.
Well, maybe at that time it was deserted either.
Stephen, I thought we had conversations about making adjustments for, because I thought we had a specific conversation around Chris, that we were gonna evaluate him at his anniversary date and not prior to, because it was more in line with, with, one, his anniversary, and I think we had some, the board advanced and some other things going on, and we would discuss that.
Yeah.
Is this an issue for you?
No.
Twelve grand?
No, because it's gonna get split over, you know, several funds, and we do have within the budget increase of a pool of money. You know, like Joe says, there is a pool of money already in there to cover this type of expense.
But would be twelve or only six, because it's just half a year.
Right, well, yes, it would only be six, because we're halfway through the physical degree.
Yes, has everybody seen these reports that Joe is referencing, several sources, including FASD's salary data? I'm not seeing that. What, can we get access to look at those documents?
This is an email.
Can we get those? Who's got it?
I believe I sent, when I was putting this together, I think, I'm pretty sure I sent it to Doug.
Yeah, and it was basically just a summary that Joe had sent over and said, this is the.
Yeah, because we're gonna get hit from the residents of, and I have no problem with standing up, but if I can take and say, this is the going salary of competitive CDDs like ours, operating utilities, da-da-da-da-da, that, that solves that problem real quick.
It probably, it is, it's probably not gonna be indicative of CDDs, and that's probably lucky for you, because most CDDs are governed by management companies, and back in 2015, it was costing you a quarter of a million dollars to manage this place. These, the Florida Association of Special Districts, handful of water districts, improvement districts, drainage districts, and I kind of just quickly referenced that. The important thing, the most important thing, is to look at the functions that he is performing, and for you to determine what kind of a value is that.
But I don't have any comparison with Joe.
You can compare it to $225,000 that you were paying in 2015, if you really want to compare it apples to apples.
I got it. I don't, I don't.
Well, you got.
So what is looking for?
I can't deal with it.
You're certainly, you're certainly have to do it, you can look at it.
So, Joe, what we need is just, you know, and I have it in an email, it says, salary survey that was done by the Florida Association of Special Districts, FASD, towards the end of 2017, the DM range was 95 to 129, with the average salary being 106,333. So if we, if a resident comes to me and says, I can't.
But did they have the backup facts to look at? What was the basis of that? Are we talking about a district, a FASD district that was triple us, equal to us? I want to try to put apples and apples.
That you won't get because they simply sent, they were doing it for the legislature back then, something was going on, they sent all of us an email, asked us what our salary was, if we were willing to share our salary range.
I mean, FASD is the Florida Association of Special Districts. It would be almost impossible to do an apples-to-apples comparison of every special district, because you've got, they're not the same. But if you're looking at average, that's what we base at least the consideration for when you do these types of things.
I just, I'd also like to point out that over the past two years, we haven't given Chris any type of a salary increase or raise, and I can promise you that I know for a fact that he saved this district more than $12,000 in streamlining and hiring the right people to do the right job. So to me, this is, it's an easy decision.
And, you know, it's not my role to tell you what to pay, I'm just, based on everything that I've done for you up to this point, looking at everything, knowing what I do, this seems to be the range that you would want to have to ensure that if you did have a vacancy and you were hiring a new district manager that had to come in and perform the functions that are here, this is the range that you're gonna need.
Yeah, and I'll look at.
But it's up to you.
And I'll look at it from a completely opposite perspective. We want to make sure this pay is commensurate to other environments, and on Friday, any given Friday, Chris doesn't determine that for what, the work, the amount of work that he's putting in, it's not worth what he's getting paid, and he walks out the door. Or another district calls him and says, hey, we've got an opportunity for you, or the city, or, I mean, these opportunities are around. So I understand what you're saying, and it's valid, but I also want to make sure that we have a salary range that with Chris, that he's comfortable with, and he thinks is truly representative of the amount of work that he, that he puts in on a day-to-day basis.
Mr. Guy?
Thank you. In the eight and a half years that I've been on this board, we've had seven district managers. And I cannot think of a single item that is more disruptive to the smooth operation of a district than losing its top official. I think that you almost cannot overpay a district manager that is doing a good job, and I certainly don't want to lose Chris, and I'm ready to make a recommendation that we make his salary 97,000 effective April 1st.
Is that a motion?
I think the attorney would agree that we may be better off adopting the range first.
I think it's appropriate, because, I mean, that provides you also the opportunity at upcoming budget session.
Yep.
To determine whether it would be appropriate to fund additional compensation for the upcoming year, next fiscal year.
Yep.
And just, as a.
Good point.
Another point of reference, would we make it effective April 1st or in line with his, does it matter with his?
Anniversary date.
With his anniversary date.
What is his anniversary date?
February 17.
February of?
I don't want to get into retro.
Yeah, I don't believe you can, and the law.
Just, just throw it out.
For compensation for.
Only if you had a contract would you have to worry about, I don't think you have a contract, do you?
No.
If you had a contract, then it'd be retro, but without a contract, I think.
You can't with an statutory scheme, you can't have compensation after services are performed.
All right.
Sorry, Chris.
Was the FASD range in 17, 80 to 97?
No, that was your range.
What was the FASD range in 17? I'm just having a harder time with this Joan of 15, 80, what's that? Twenty percent.
No, it's not, it's 12 percent.
Wasn't this?
Ninety-five to eighty?
Eighty-five. Are you talking about the salary range, or?
Yes.
Oh, the range.
I'm having a hard time with that.
Isn't this from 2017?
Jumping that high in two years.
Isn't that what you said in the email?
Yeah, the 2017 range, based on FASD, was 95 to 129,000. I mean, we lowballed the range.
So we effectively lowered the range.
Oh, yeah, and everybody knew that, but your incoming manager had no issue with it.
Our range was based on where our leadership staff was at that point, it was based on April's, she was at 85, and then Chris was around 85, whatever. We based it on that, and we put it to, I mean, we had a lot of discussion on it, and I, I wanted the range to be higher, but I don't, I don't think it was based on anything other than just us throwing numbers in the air.
What we could afford, basically, at the time. So do we have a motion to increase the salary range?
I'd like to postpone it until the next meeting to have a chance to do some more research on this.
So I make the motion to accept the salary range from 95 to 115, per Joe DeSorbo's recommendation.
Okay, the motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, motion and second, any further discussion?
Again, I'd like to defer this to the next meeting, have more time to check out this, we just got this.
I understand. Okay, I have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, okay, the motion passes, three, two. Mr. Guy, I'll now move to your motion that we didn't get a second on, if you wanted me to state it.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. I'll move that our district manager's salary be increased to 97,000 effective April 1st, 2019, thank you.
Okay, motion and a second?
I'll second.
Again, if we are doing it April 1st, we can have a discussion of it at the 21st meeting. I would ask it to be deferred till the 21st.
I would like it to be tabled, too. And I hear you, I think you can still get the information that will, you'll feel comfortable with, I'm sure that can be forwarded to all the board members. Joe, would you do that, the information that you provided to Mr. Banks, can you forward that to the rest of us?
Selina.
Okay, a motion and a second to increase Mr. Schumaker's salary, effective April 1st, to 97,000, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and those are powered.
Aye.
Okay, motion passed.
Mr. Chair, Madam Chairman, following up on Mr. DeSorbo's presentation and comments, just a note to Chris and Steve for the upcoming budget cycle, not to forget that they're going to discuss further compensation reviews in the future to have a budget discussion about it for the management position.
And I was gonna recommend to the board, now that you started the evaluation process, really need to make sure that's an annual, an annual. Yeah, I was gonna recommend to the board, now that you started the evaluation process, you really need to make sure that's an annual, an annual occurrence. Using that, that system worked fine. I thought it was, gave a lot of good information, a lot of good input and discussion with that board advance. Given that this is April, it's gonna start, you wanna make sure by January, February of each year, you do that evaluation.
But we have other management positions that we haven't even discussed. Where are we at on those?
That, those we can work on, too, because we're probably gonna wanna raise the cap sometimes.
When are we gonna see, when are we gonna see this data to be able to analyze those like we did?
Well, to develop a salary administration program, now that you have your top position, the rest, the other ten, the rest is just a formula.
Well, that's part of Chris's responsibility, is to do annual reviews and do, uh, whether merit or incentive-based increases. That would be part of his task, his responsibility, as long as it's within the range.
Set the range.
Well, the range is already set for, for all the roles. Now, he would have to-
When are we going to revise it, like we did this?
Well, we may not need to revise it. If we go, if, if Chris looks at the ranges and said, hey, let's say Kenny, just as an example. If Kenny's at the top of his range and there's nowhere for him to go, he would come back with a recommendation, say, you know, board, we need to look at the salary range, and then we, he would either do his due diligence, or we would do ours. Uh, but if it's within range, then, then there's no point in discussion, because his merit increase is gonna stay within the range, and until you hit a point where you can't go any further is when you need to adjust your salary range, like we did in Chris's case.
I'm sorry, what? I, I take the vote, I didn't hear the vote.
Three, two.
So, Chris, you'll do an evaluation of the salary ranges for the top-tier management, and let us know if you think there needs to be any adjustments today?
Sure, we'll look at it as part of the budget process, taking a clear before of those discussions. We'll be starting the budgeting a month earlier this year.
It's coming up.
And I would just add, it's not just for, I mean, you, you would analyze something as a whole and come up with recommendations from stat top to bottom, but you would evaluate them probably a little differently, because you've got your management level and then your, your other-
My guess is, since you did that in, um, just, um, you did that at the end of 17, it was the end of 17, I think it was the end of 17, that we did him, that there might be the next two underneath him that might be impacted. And I think the others, that range was, it was wide enough, I think that the range was wide enough that, uh, you're gonna be okay. But it's something easy to check on. I think you're up to it.
Yeah, there was an administrative position, public works position.
Yes, right, right. And I said, and I think those are pretty liberal, we certainly have to double check them. Okay. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thanks, Joe.
Chris and I will be in Tallahassee next week. We got a couple meetings, and we're gonna try to, try to find some money, so hopefully we'll come back.
Bring your A-game.
We always liked money.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you.
Okay, that brings us to Zennar.
Hey, you wanna do an intro, or you wanna ask Mr. Sanders to come straight up?
Mr. Sanders?
Mr. Sanders?
This is Rich Sanders from, I guess, the President of Zennar Incorporated, our metering company, and brought Dan Devane with him. And Dan is the district-
Regional salesman.
How's everyone? Thank you for having me today. So, um, this is basically just an information session, and I know some of you. I was here a few years ago, so I remember some of you, some of you I haven't met yet. So, we are the metering and automation company that, um, our equipment is installed in your network. And, and recently, first of all, let me start off by saying that, um, you know, we work with a lot of utilities across the country, and I gotta tell you that Kenny and Leslie do a wonderful job. I'm gonna tell you that straight up, upfront. They do a great job. It's a pleasure working with them. They keep your system, even with all the challenges they face, they keep your system running really, really well. So, I, as, that's out of the way, I thought it was appropriate for me to let you know you've got two good, quality people there. So, um, recently, we, we sent some of our people here as a courtesy to help. Kenny called me and said, hey, you know, we're behind a little bit, because you guys haven't sent us our, our product we needed to keep up with, uh, some of the issues. So, we sent some people here, and during that time, I said, as long as we're there, please report back to me on what you see. What are some of the things we can do that we can help the community improve their, their system and what's going on? And that's what we're here to talk about today, just so we have, uh, sort of paint a circle around what I wanted to do here today. So, on your screen, if you go to the first slide, what we're gonna talk about today is the damaged product that customers signed that we, we saw damaged by your initial installer that did the project and installed the equipment, uh, the battery failures and the stealth readers. We're gonna talk about that. Um, ETR failures, which is your encoder from the meter portion of the encoder, and then the meters themselves, what we see. Alright, and then we'll talk about our suggestions to how to improve that. So, if you turn to the next one, you're gonna see, now, this isn't broad, alright, so there were somebody, some, a handful of different situations we saw out there. And, uh, as you can see, the first picture depicts the stealth readers, and the bottom covers are off, and, you know, obviously, somebody had been looking inside the product and, and left those covers off, and of course, that does do the product a lot of good when the batteries are hanging out like that. Over time, you're gonna get degradation of those batteries, and obviously, they're going to, to die. If you look at the next-
Rich question. The picture on the left, can you go back?
Yes.
The picture on the left, uh, were the MRUs disattached from the meter lid?
They, no, they were detached, that's correct.
They were never, the meter lid wasn't around?
I can't tell you, I, I didn't take this picture. I assumed the meet, the, the meter lid was there, but the MIUs were just laying in there. Of course, as you can see, you know, in, in case you don't remember originally when I was here talking about it, batteries need, need to be positive side up. Batteries will self-discharge over time under sides are upside down. That's why when you buy batteries at the store, they're always positive side up on the racks. And then when you put them in your flashlight, flashlights are made so that they're always positive side down. When you put the flashlight away, that's why when you go back six months later and turn your flashlight out, it's dim or, or dead, and you always think somebody left it on. It's not. Batteries self-discharge positive side down.
Look, if you stack it the right way.
Yeah, that's right.
Those people turn it upside down.
Have you ever noticed, no, have you ever noticed, so, uh, flashlights are made so they're rounded, at the end you put the batteries in, so it's always glass down, which is positive side down. That's because the battery companies wanna sell batteries, by the way. So, and that, and that's the truth, by the way. When I discovered this, and I was in my 50s when I did that, I'm a, I'm a bit older now. Um, I went to the battery manufacturers, the two biggest in the world, who we deal with, and I said, they look at our data, there's something wrong with your batteries. And they, they looked at it, they're engineers, and I said, no, you know what? Uh, your data is perfect. Uh, what do you mean it's perfect? Well, batteries need to be positive side up, and, uh, if you don't, they self-discharge over time. So, you get a quicker use rate on it if you don't have your batteries positive side up. That's why we use the lid locks or the cases that we use when we do our installations. So, to your, to your point, Mr. Tinkle, yes, they were upside down, they were laying in the pit. Obviously, that's not a good way to have them, and, uh, again, this is not broad across your system, but there, there are a handful of units that we found like that. If you turn the page again, you'll see, again, you have some broken lids. That's something I don't see very often, but I guess you have a lot of maintenance people that do work for the people in the community, and they probably drive over these boxes and break them, and of course, that, that's not good for that either, so. These are just some examples, the, the, the only significance of this is that this stuff is going on in the community. So, these are just pictures and examples of what we saw when we were out there, uh, doing some of the change-ups, okay? And bringing the system up to speed. When, when they do open them up, though, and I, and I would suggest this, so a lot of communities, um, put stickers either on the lid itself or on, on the MIUs and equipment, probably better on the lid, letting them know that the property, this is the property of water utility, they shouldn't be dismantling it or taking it apart or doing anything with it, so that they ought to know that, that there's a policy in place that they'll be fined for that.
We need to go out and purchase, because I see it every time I walk in the dog, the lids upside down, away from the pit. First of all, I don't understand, other than the fact that they would wanna get in and shut off the water, maybe put the lid back on. We can go buy those little round stick-ons, or paint, better yet, stencils, like we've put on a lot of the mantles, street mantles, to let people know that this is going to a body of water, and spray them this side up. Something to make sure people understand. The, the, the average Joe on the street here has no clue that that's an issue. That picture you showed on the one before, it's so atypical, it's not funny.
Yeah, I, I, you know what, it's, it's-
They don't have a clue.
I don't really, I haven't seen a community that had that many issues with, with these kind of lids, to be honest. It must be, you know, that, that, there's, the residents don't really do their own work, and they're just, the people that are doing it are not.
It's because the residents predominantly do not have a shut-off next to their house, so their only source to shut off either the irrigation water and/or the potable-
Is inside the-
Is inside the meter pit.
Correct.
That's the problem.
But is that really, I mean, that's a, that's a, that would be a small percentage to the sheer number of effects that we had, right?
That's, that's just one issue.
That's preventative, which is, which is great, but I don't think that's root cause.
It's that way. And, and we have, I mean, I have our turn-up, you know, I live, I live in Texas, and we have our turn-up in the pit, too. And I've instructed all my kids, and I'm like, if something happens in the house and you turn the water off, you know, take the lid, just place it over and take the wrench, and, you know, there's a special tool you use to turn the water off at home. So, yeah, I mean, I could see where people just take those lids, flip them over, and dump them back, you know, it's, uh, or you can just lock the lids, but then, then they can't get in there to turn the water off, there's an issue, so.
Well, these, these cast iron lids are a pain in the butt to begin with. I've got a separate conversation going with four meter box. I used to deal with them all the time in Indiana, and we're trying to find if they can come up. They've got the exact print of the ones we've got, you know, the plastic 18-inch deals, to see if there is a way to mass 3,000 of them and get them to us to put these, to put in here.
Well, I think, I think Kenny is, uh, addressing some of that. There are some new boxes he's putting in, and he's now taking these stealth readers and he's strapping them to the side of the box. So, because some of the problems you're having is when they do take the lid off, is they take the wires, and we'll show you some of the, the problems we're getting from that, because they're pulling on those wires, pretty, that's a pretty heavy lid.
So, you're saying you're putting a holster for the, the units in the-
And Kenny's doing, yeah, it's a good idea. Kenny's come up with a good idea, and it's-
Our, our round pits, which are, what, 3,000, 3,500 of them, are crap. Should've been changed when we did this.
Mr. Tinkle, one, one thing that hasn't been said, and your board may not be aware of, I call on utilities throughout the Southeast United States, it's general utility practice that anything that's in the meter box, obviously, is, is owned by the utility. And then if a customer wants the ability to turn off their water, that they are supposed to do something and provide a separate turn-off on the customer's side. That's standard practice throughout water utilities in the Southeast United States.
We don't have a sep- separate valve on the customer's side.
Right, that's usually something they end up plumbing in.
So, going through this, if you, if you turn the page again, you'll, you'll see another one with them laying in there, and the same with the, the final page, and then you'll see one where the batteries are completely hanging out of the unit. There were a couple of different ones we found that the batteries are completely out of the unit. So, now I wanna get to the, the encoder issues that we saw here. Has everybody looked at those pictures? Any questions? That's not how the, the unit should look, by the way. None of these, you know, they shouldn't be looking when the battery's hanging out of them. They were very well put together, so.
Where's the positive side?
Oh, thank you, you're right. So, these are encapsulated to be IP68, so you can't get water intrusion into the battery. That's what they're covering, how the battery is. But yes, we can tell, if you look at the red wires, the red wire is the positive side of the, the battery. Alright? So, if you'll turn the page, you're gonna see a drawing, uh, Dan, do we have that? Could you bring those up here?
Yes.
So, this is your encoder, a mouse to the top of the meter, and what the encoder does is it takes the message, right? The reading from the meter, and it transmits it to the MIU, and then that MIU transmits it into our software, and then you have access at your desk. Alright, so I'm gonna pass this around so you can see the product itself, so it makes more sense as I'm talking about it. So, what's hap- so, if you look at that, so the little cap on top, right, covers where the three wires are connected. And then it's encapsulated, or with, with a product that becomes very hard. So, it keeps water, it makes it IP68, it is sealed against water intrusion. And then underneath that, you have three terminals where the, where the little screws go in, where you terminate the wires. There's three little tubes that then go underneath the other side, and you'll see, and those are soldered to the board. This way, water can't get from the top into and touch the circuit board that's encapsulated inside the product. So, I wanted to show you that before we turned and looked at some of the, the issues. So, a lot of the issues we're finding, and you can tell where the wire was initially, when it was produced and encapsulated, right? And the cap put on, and then you can see, if somebody pulls on it, you can see where the old group was and how much the wire was pulled out. So, we find a lot of them where the wire was pulled out. Now, I, I don't know whether that's from when they initially installed these, these products, the installers, I noticed when I was out here that they were carrying and by the wires, you know, and that meter has some weight to it. And, and/or somebody lifts their cover off and it stretches the wire. But we have had some incidents when the, the failures are here, and it's pulling those wires out, which is causing, right? That's the encapsulation separation and the water getting in between the terminals, which obviously can cause it to not read appropriately. And a lot of them, we get back and they're reading fine, right? And so, we, we started looking into this, and what's happening is, you know, you do get a little water in there, it causes it not to read properly, and then when it dries out, it reads properly. So, obviously, they, they're being replaced in the field when they find those. And, and you can see, and I, I gave you a picture of one, on the next page, you can even see if you pull hard enough, and some of them, and it's not just one of them, there were a number of them, you pull hard enough, and you'll actually crack the cover on the encapsulation. That's how hard they pulled on the wire, or whatever happened to it. So, that obviously caused it the malfunction. Those are being replaced. I just wanted to give you sort of an idea of the kinds of things that are causing the problems. Now, Zennar, um, is warranting all this, it's not an issue, we're not coming back to you and saying, hey, you know, this is a problem that you guys have, it's not our product, and, which is true, but we're, we're warranting those items. So, we're, we're taking care of that, the products, and as I said, as a courtesy, we even sent some of our people out here to catch up and make sure we got you guys up to speed. The, the next picture was interesting. We had, we got some meters back, and Kenny and I talked about this, because we looked at it, and we said, well, how did the little rocks get inside the meter? And Kenny was telling me that you have a, a check valve, that the check valves are old and they're coming apart, and then that, that material is coming back into the meter. So, which, which means there must be some, a little bit of a reverse flow or pressure differential sometimes that forces that stuff back into the meter instead of going through the line. So, um, we, we talked about that, so we're gonna send some, some parts to Kenny. When he finds something like this, you don't need to send it back to us, and, and he'll be able to replace the chamber here. And, and the same, the, the, the case next to it, you guys probably have never seen the inside of a meter, have you? Mr. Tinkle might have, because I know he's curious like that. But, um, some of the other board members may not have done that. And if you look inside the meter, you'll see what looks like fungus in there, sludge, fungus. These are on your reuse meters, right, which means that there's something in your water that's causing that. And again, when that malfunction happens, Kenny and I and Leslie have talked about it, we're gonna send parts, just clean it, put the new chamber in, you're all set. So, we're gonna take care of those kind of issues that we, we've seen on some of your meters that you've sent back in. Okay? And, and that's not uncommon. Everybody, you know, what we have, just to give you an idea, 80% of the water in the United States has some sort of mineral content in it, whether it's calcium, iron, whatever. It does, over time, build up. So, we see these things happen, and we try to work with utilities to come up with what they can do to quickly repair those meters and get them back in the field. So, this is not unusual, it's not unusual at all, and, uh, these are just sort of common problems. So, if the board's not aware, but we wanna make you aware that, you know, those things do happen, that's why, why you have people like Kenny to sort, sort that through and, and take care of those issues out there. So, these are our, our, the RMA findings on ETR- So these are our, our, the RMA findings on the ETR issue. Dead batteries that we're finding in the stealth readers themselves are typically, again, in, when you're, if you remember the beginning of the project, I don't know how many here remember the beginning of the project. The, I believe at that time, Seven Trent was running the utility, you contracted them, and they hired Seven Trent to install the system. So-